You ready? Fred?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I call it to order the 18th meeting of the Mayor and City Council of Laurel. This is Monday, September 12th. We're meeting in regular time. I'll ask you all to stand for the invocation by Reverend Warren Litchfield and the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mayor Moe.
Almighty God.
Albert. 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 Sorry. Get your mic here. Nobody will... Sorry about that. I'm gonna pay a price for interrupting you. I know that now.
I'm gonna go now.
You're good.
Almighty God, we gather this evening hour to conduct the benediction of the city. We offer our prayer for our mayor, for the president, for the members of the city council, and for all an authority granted to them, a sense of justice, strength, and wisdom as they perform their duty in behalf of all our people. We commend this city, this county, this state, and this nation with generous care and understanding. Remember those who lie upon a bed of affliction; comfort those who mourn the loss of the loved ones. In the name of the one whose Lord of life we pray. Amen.
Amen, sir.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, in the liberty and justice of all.
Thank you, Reverend.
Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Ms. Nicholas?
Here.
Mr. Laz?
Here.
Ms. Crary?
Here.
Mr. Smalls?
Here.
President Rex?
Here.
Mayor Moe?
I'll ask for the approval of the minutes of the 17th meeting of the Mayor and City Council. This will be July 25th of '16. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Crary?
Yes.
Mr. Laz?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Mr. Smalls?
I vote yes.
President Rex?
Yes. Thank you. May we have now the report of the Mayor and City Council, and I will start tonight with Mr. Smalls.
Thank you, Mr. President. Although we were all on a break during the month of August, I don't think any of us actually took a break. We participated in a number of activities. August 13th, the city was joined by the Lower Board of Trade and several local businesses with our Fourth Annual Back to School Jam where we gave away hundreds of school supplies to students. It was, I think, the hottest day of the year. The temperature reached 105 on the field, but we had a very good crowd of folks out. We had ice cream and things like that that helped keep folks cool, as well as some cooling fans. It was a great day, a hot day, but it was for a worthy cause. I also participated in the Cops and Crops that was held at the City Garden where our police department came out and supported the community and so it supported the efforts of the folks who are out there planting and growing and harvesting vegetables in the community garden. I attended the annual charity dinner for the Knights of Pythias. It was a good evening, although it was a small group, it was definitely worth attending. Colleagues, I had the opportunity, many of us know former Sea Pleasant Councilman Johnny Heigs. I celebrated with him his 70th birthday, which was a very joyous occasion. And finally, we attended the Emancipation Day Parade and Celebration held in the Grove Community. And yesterday, I had the honor of attending the 9/11 unveiling of the monument right up front here in City Hall. That's my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Smalls. Ms. Crary?
This past week, Luanne Crook and I attended the MML Board Conference held in College Park at University of Maryland. And we pounded out the strategic plan for the next year. And also, it what involves this city, in addition to the mayor being chair of HEPAK, and I believe Joanne Barr has been appointed to HEPAK to hometown emergency. We want to reach out to all 157 municipalities and all departments and staff so that they know which resources are available to them through the MML Board and staff. Between the two of us, Luanne and I, I think we've got all the notes covered. Yesterday, as Mr. Smalls mentioned, we attended the wonderful events for 9/11. And I want to thank Mission Barbecue and our Public Works and our police and first responders for all that they do for this city. Next Sunday will be a dog show between 11:00 and 2:00 by Parks and Recs at McCullough Field. And I believe, I'll correct, Mr. Smalls isn't saying it was 110 on the field that day, and I believe Mr. Farree will back me up. And that would be my report.
What's a degree one way or another?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Laz?
Thank you, Mr. President. The remembrance, remembrances that took place in the city for 9/11 were moving yesterday. The thanks to the members of the DPW and Parks and Recreation for erecting the monument around the piece of steel out front, and thank you to Mr. Tigler for the wonderful monument. Condolences to the Hoffman family on the passing of Harry Hoffman. He was a longtime resident of Prince George Street before he moved up to Mount Airy. And he was a good neighbor. He lived right next door to me. Please watch out for our children on their way to school. Still an awful lot of speeding in the morning, couple of mornings I've left when kids are trying to walk to school. And we've got several walk-two schools in Laurel, so please be careful. And finally, please do not pass a school bus. They're stopped and those signs are flashing and the signs out because those kids come around the front, especially when they're getting off the bus. So please be aware. That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Laz. Ms. Nicholas?
Thank you. I'd like to welcome everyone back. I hope they had a great summer. Over the last month, I too attended a number of events, but the one I want to speak about was the 9/11 memorial service that was held yesterday. I'd like to thank the city and all the first responders and everyone involved that took part in that. The local pastors, they gave very moving messages and inspirational prayers. I just thank everyone for their continued acts of kindness and service to us. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to recognize Mr. Fleming and Ms. Grant of his office and the rest of the people that participated as well and put the, I think Reverend Hodges from the Oakland's Presbyterian Church was very instrumental, and want to thank them as well for doing the marvelous job that they did. And I hope that we can do something like that every year and increase the size of the garden with maybe some other memorials and make it as nice as it's going to be. So thank you, Mr. Fleming, and appreciate it. With that, Mayor Moe?
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple of things, let me acknowledge and thank former Mayor Robinson, who's with us here tonight. Joe, welcome. Since we've been off, just a couple of things to highlight. The Department of Park and Recreation did have their Fitz Day Fun in the Sun over at Greenview Drive Pool. I think it's very successful. Also, we did have my time with the mayor over at Greenview Drive Community Pool. On August 10th, the Fighters for Freedom celebrated their anniversary event, so we want to acknowledge that and thank them. And back in August 12th, I want to acknowledge and thank city staff, particularly our police department, Public Works, and our Park and Recs. We had a concert in the park, which was Earth, Wind &amp; Fire Tribute Band. We had many, many people we weren't expecting. I think they thought it was the real band that was showing up, is what we're, what we think. It was no issues, no problems, but again, we worked quite quickly to make sure that we were, had the resources there that we need, as well as the volunteer fire department in particular on the ambulance side. So I want to thank them and acknowledge them. To the Laurel Board of Trade and the council for the Back to School Jam, I thought, again, although hot, had a very good turnout, as well as city staff in particular, our Park and Recs department was there. I want to acknowledge and thank them. You heard about the Cops and the Crops Community Garden at the Laurel Presbyterian Church. Fred, again, I just hope you could pass my thanks on. I thought it was a great opportunity to bring the community together, and hopefully that will continue to. That was the first annual event, and I think, again, it was well-attended and a good opportunity for our police department to interact with the community. The Emancipation Day celebration at St. Mark's Church, as most know, the library was still closed, so they had some challenges. Next year will be a whole different ballgame for them, but the day turned out to be very well-attended, well-organized. Food was good, as always. The parade and then the walk for 5K Run Walk also for diabetes was, was put on by Emancipation, by the Emancipation Day Committee in St. Mark's United, St. Mark's Church, so I want to thank them as well. Didn't make it to Doggy Dip Day. Good day? Over 200, is that dogs or people? Okay. So they all, they all had a good time. September 11th, which was, we had our 9/11 event, but the unveiling of the monument out front. But before that, we had an interfaith service, and I want to thank all the pastors who came together and, and put that on. Well-attended, I think, probably well, at least 150 people there. And our emergency services, first responders, again, want to thank them. They, we started the day out with the United, First United Methodist Church, who had a service at 8:15 along with our first responders. And then the American Legion had an event, as well as several other events throughout the day. But it ended with the city's event here at the interfaith service and then the unveiling. Again, I want to thank Marty in particular. We've had this piece of the steel from the towers for quite some, some time now. It's been put away, it's been displayed, I should say. We've always wanted to do a monument, and we've found the right location. Yes, there will be some other things that will happen out front there in the years to come. And I think from our, all the departments really stepped up, from our communications department, from Park and Recs and facilities and Public Works and our police department, all of them really jumped in. And most, everybody was there yesterday, so we want to, want to thank them and, and thank everybody for the hard work, and the community in particular who came out, so. Just a couple announcements you may have heard. September 16th, the Laurel Senior Friendship Club will have their 50th anniversary from 5:00 to 7:00. And then September 17th, the Chiefs Citizens Advisory Committee will have a block party at McCullough Field. That's from 1:00 to 3:00. That's open to everybody, right, Chief? We encourage everybody to participate on the 17th, this Saturday, the 17th. And then on the 18th is the annual dog show down at McCullough Field from 12:00 until 2:00. Mr. President, with your indulgence, I have a couple of appointments that I need to, to make. David DeLau, Park and Recs. Christina Bonner. Did I get that right? Okay. The Environmental Affairs Committee, she's with us tonight. We thank you for coming. Brian, the reappointments are Brian Lee, Board of Appeals, Marjorie McSiney, H. Historical District Commission, and Douglas Hayes, Historical District Commission. I'd ask for your approval of that.
Thank you, Mayor. May I have a motion, counsel?
Some movements, President.
Thank you, Mr. Smalls. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Smalls?
I vote yes.
Mr. Laz?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Ms. Crary?
Yes.
President Rex?
Yes. Thanks to all who are...
Thank you for coming, too.
Thank you very much for volunteering. And let me note, too, for the record, Ms. Barnes in the Office of Communication, you and Ms. Jackson and your staff did a marvelous job yesterday, as always, and everything went off on, on time and as planned, and you all do a great job with that, and thank you again. I think let's move on now to item number eight on the agenda tonight. As some of you know, and some of you should know, the city recognizes a person who has done things for the city and has stepped out and done above and beyond the normal things that a person is expected to do, not only in the volunteer service, but also in the paid end. So tonight, we'd like to recognize firefighter James Iger, who was exposed to the Laurel Volunteer Fire Department at a very early age. As with most Laurelites, everyone knew everyone in Jimmy's family, all knew the, several members of the Laurel Volunteer Fire Department. Since that time, not only did he join, but he was, become a life member. He still continues to participate with the department, duty crews, and has served in the office positions of both fire operations and now on the Board of Trustees. Jimmy received the Laurel Volunteer Firefighter of the Year Award in October of 2015, and now Jimmy's son is now a member as well. Jimmy, would you come forward, please? Mayor, will you join me? You have a nickname, don't you? I think your nickname from what Brian Cox told me is something like Krusty? But nevertheless, Jimmy, we know what you've done for the city over the years. Mayor Moe, and I very much appreciate it.
Mr. President, the mic?
This is a certificate from the city recognizing all the accomplishments that you've had. And here also is a gift card that you can take your family out and have a good time one night. So thank you for everything you did. Really appreciate it. Mayor Moe?
I'm very happy, on behalf of the Mayor and City Council, we do have one of our challenge coins for you that we want to present to you. Eddie, make sure I had that in my pocket tonight. We don't usually give these out to anybody and everybody, but we're very proud of our seal. We want to thank you for all the work that you continue to do in the community at Fire House, and really do appreciate you, as well as members of your family, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it.
I'll try. It's just, thank you. I mean, I don't know what else to say. I appreciate it very much. It's been 30 long years at the Firehouse, plus helping around the neighborhood as well. Love this community. Love this country. Thank you.
How about your son standing up so we can introduce him to us?
My son, my son Jared, 18 years old.
Welcome onboard. Looked to see you on the truck.
Sitting next to him is my mother-in-law, Maria Archer. Next to her is my daughter Elizabeth. Next to my daughter is my other son Gerald. Next to Gerald is my lovely wife of 21 years, Amy. And guy I've known since 1973, Mike Soller.
He is not part of your family.
We always consider, consider family.
Did you read that email I sent you today about the FEEA scholarships? Yeah.
Thank you all for coming. If you want to take a, we'll take a quick break, so you all can leave. Want to, want to stay here, welcome to do. Okay, it's 7:19, and I'll open the general public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to say anything about anything? I see no one, so we'll close this general public hearing at 7:19 and a half. This time, we'll take the bid recommendation for the sprinkler system at the Armory Anderson Murphy Community Center. Ms. Barnes?
Good evening. As we discussed in the work session, we are continuing with the Armory Phase II renovations and wanted to add a sprinkler system to that project. So in order to expedite the, the procedure to get that, to get that as part of the renovation, we did solicit bids from three companies. KCI engineered the upgrade to the water service as part of the renovation project, and the WSSC permits have already been acquired. The scope of the work includes installing a wet pipe automatic sprinkler system throughout the entire Armory facility and a dry automatic system to the garage area. This will include the required amount of sprinkler heads and fire department connections. We invited three contractors to provide proposals, and the information that they provided back were from Independent Sprinklers LLC of Laurel for $59,440, Livingston Fire Protection, Inc. of Hyattsville for $101,645, and NCON Corporation of Hyattsville for $118,725. The funding is available in the current CIP for the Armory Phase II sprinkler project, so after review by city staff and the fire marshal, it's recommended that the Mayor and City Council accept the proposal by Independent Sprinklers LLC for $59,440. This company has completed other projects with the Department of Parks and Recreation, and we have found all work to be acceptable.
Thank you. Is there any questions from the council on this issue? Seeing none, I'll take a motion.
Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
I recommend that we accept the proposal as set forth by Joanne Barr regarding Independent Sprinklers.
Fine. Would you put into the record the name of the company and the amount, please?
Independent Sprinklers. $59,440.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Crary?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Mr. Laz?
Yes.
Mr. Smalls?
I vote yes.
President Rex?
Yes. Our item number 11. This is introduction in first public hearing on ordinance number 1877, text amendment number 242, and ordinance pending Laurel City Code, Chapter 20, Land Development and Subdivision Regulations, Article 1, Zoning, to amend Division 1 in general, Division 3, City Planning Commission, Division 4, Board of Appeals, Division 5, Zoning Districts, Division 6, Parking and Loading Facilities, Division 7, Sign and Advertising Structures, Division 9, Exceptions and Supplements to the Zone Regulations, to add Section 20-20.9, Small Wind Energy Systems, Division 13, Historic District Commission, to add Section 20-25.9, Prevention of Demolition and, Prevention of Demolition of Neglect, and repealing it in its entirety, Division 16, Community Design Standards, amending Laurel City Code, Chapter 20, Land Development and Subdivision Regulations, to add Appendix D, Parking Modification Zone, and Providing for an Effective Date. Mr. Brock?
Yes, Mr. President. This was brought before you for the workshop. It is a text amendment updating the Unified Land Development Code. It has been updated from the work session to include the comments from councils, the first being community design standards. It was originally recommended that this entire division be removed. It is now recommended that the Community Design Review Committee be deleted and that the community design standards be retained in their current form. And additionally, parking modification zone, the map... And additionally, parking modification zone, the map was, had an error on it, and it has been corrected.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any questions from the council? This is the first public hearing. I'll open the public hearing at 7:25. Is there anyone wishing to speak on the topic? Seeing no one, I'll close at 7:25 and a half. We'll have this on our agenda for the next council meeting, which is September the 26th at 7:00 PM in the evening. Item number 12, introduction in first public hearing on ordinance number 1878, and ordinance of the mayor and city council of Laurel, amending the code of the city of Laurel, Chapter 11, Planning and Development, Section 11-4, Adoption of the Master Plan, to reflect the recent adoption of a master plan for the city of Laurel. This is the first public hearing on this item, and I'll open that public hearing at 7:25. And Mr. Brock, your comments, please.
Yes, Mr. President. This is an amendment to add the master plan that was approved July 25, 2016, and to add this and replace the previous master plan that was done in 19, oh, excuse me, 2007.
Is there anyone wishing to speak on this item? Seeing no one, it's 7:26, I'll close the public hearing. We'll move on, we'll have that on our agenda for September 26th at 7:00 PM as well. Move on to item number 13, it's introduction in first public hearing on ordinance number 1879, and ordinance of the mayor and city council of Laurel, amending the code of the city of Laurel, Chapter 8 Licenses, Permits, and Business Regulations, to amend Section 8-6 Miscellaneous License Fees, and to repeal Schedule A, License Fee Schedule, and B, Permit Fee Schedule, with the purpose of removing such fees from the city code and amending Section 8-21, 8-25, and 8-55 to reflect this change. This is the first public hearing. Mr. Brock?
Yes, Mr. President. This is amendment of the city code to eliminate license fee schedules and permit fee schedules from the code and enabling the mayor to set the fees on an annual basis.
Thank you, Mr. Brock. I'll open the public hearing at 7:27, and is there anyone wishing to speak on this topic? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing at 7:27 and a half. Move on to item number 14, and item number 14 is ordinance number 1880, an ordinance amending the city code, Article 7 Property Standards, Chapter 18 Building and Building Regulations, Division 1 Storage of Unregistered, Inoperable, Dismantled, Partially Dismantled and Wrecked Motor Vehicles and Trailers, Snow and Ice Removal, and Division 2 The Accumulations and Obnoxious Conditions, et cetera, and Providing for an Effective Date. It's being read into the record for the first reading. And Mr. Brock?
Yes, Mr. President. The code has been changed, Division 2, it was accumulation of obnoxious conditions, it's been changed to accumulation and nuisance conditions. This enables the code enforcement officers and police officers to issue citations for the illegal parking of unregistered vehicles in parking zones and drive lanes where they currently have become a nuisance. It also reduces the warning time from five days to 48 hours in order to remove the vehicles.
Thank you, sir. We did not have this on our work session, right?
We did.
Yes, sir, you did.
Okay, just making sure. All right, so I'll open the public hearing on it at 7:29. Is there anyone wishing to speak on it? Seeing none, I'll close at 7:29 and a half, and this will be on our agenda for possible passage on the September the 26th at 7:00 PM. Item number 15, introduction in first public hearing on ordinance number 1881, an ordinance to amend the operating budget of the mayor and city council of Laurel, Maryland for the fiscal year of July 1st, 2015 through June 30th, 2016. Ms. Saylor?
Mr. President, we discussed this, excuse me, ordinance at the September work session. It's an overall increase to the FY 2016 budget of $2,309,023 included in this ordinance. The largest portion of that increase has to do with existing loans that we had for 811 Fifth Street and 7703, 7705 Sandy Spring Road. Those loans were paid off and then consolidated with an extended term in order to get a better interest rate. The other items were the utilization of excess red light camera revenue to provide for a transfer to the CIP, additional admissions and amusements for an additional, I'm sorry, contribution to the pension fund, additional highway user revenue that will also be transferred to the CIP specifically dedicated for street projects, and to record financial activities of the Fourth of July Committee, as well as to provide additional funding from the unassigned fund balance and any excesses in revenue or savings and expenditures from the FY 2016 operating budget, to create an employee insurance reserve, a vehicle fuel reserve, a utility reserve, and an addition of funds to the emergency equipment fund, as well as the street reserve, and an addition to the existing public safety reserve.
Thank you. This is open for the public hearing at 7:31. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this item? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing at 7:32. Have it on our agenda for possible passage on September the 26th at 7:00 PM. Thank you, Ms. Saylor. Item number 16, introduction in first public hearing on Charter Resolution Number 170, a charter resolution of the mayor and city council of Laurel, amending Article 400 Administration of the Charter of the City of Laurel to reflect the reorganization of the city by amending Section 465 Director of Department of Management Development Management and adding Section 466 Director of the Department of the Fire Marshal and Permit Services to reflect the division of the Department of Planning and Zoning into the Department of Economic and Community Development and the Department of the Fire Marshal and Permit Services. I will read this into the record for the first time. Mr. Brock?
Yes, Mr. President. This is a charter resolution that does two things. First, it pre-names the Department of Planning and Zoning or Department of Development Management to the Department of Economic and Community Development. And secondly, it creates the Department of the Fire Marshal and Permit Services and the director position.
Thank you. This is, I'll open the public hearing at 7:33. Is there anyone wishing to speak on the topic? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing at 7:33 and a half. This will again be on our agenda for the meeting of September the 26th. Is there anything else to come before the council? Seeing none, we are adjourned.
I don't remember this being on our work session.